We'd like to call this meeting to order. If I could, welcome everybody. If I could, I'd like to ask Pastor Hamden, are you here? Mr. Tucker?
Yes, sir.
Would you mind giving an invitation?
I don't mind at all. Can we all stand, please?
Thank you.
Let us bow our heads and open our hearts. Lord, here we are today, acting as your children and representing your citizens here in Kershaw County. We ask now, Lord, for a discerned heart, a calm mind, and an open thoughts throughout our deliberations this afternoon. We ask that you continue to watch over us and strengthen us as leaders and make us into what you need to mold us into, to represent all the citizens of Kershaw County. Now, Lord, Father, we know that you've been so gracious to give us the rain and the storms that's about the Carolinas and the United States. So, we thank you for those, and we thank you for our families, our friends, and our loved ones. And we ask that you continue to bless the military, our ladies, and our men who are fighting for our freedoms and liberties. Now, Lord, Father, when we depart from this place, we ask that we never depart from your presence. Give us traveling mercy back to our various destinations. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen?
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir.
You're quite welcome, sir.
With the adoption of the agenda, do I have a motion?
Make a motion, we adopt the agenda as presented.
Mr. Tucker, do we have a second?
Second.
Who is that?
Mr. Brazel.
Mr. Brazel, second discussion.
Mr. Jones, if I may.
Yes, sir.
Sir, I'd like to add an item on there under new business I would like to remove. That is no longer something I wish to discuss, it's no longer an issue.
Okay, very good. So, we can strike.
Is that item 10 under new business?
Yes, sir.
It is.
Mr. Vice Chair?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion that we amend the agenda by deleting item number 10 under new business.
Mr. Tucker, is there a second?
I would second.
All right. We have a second. Any discussion? I'm sorry, Mr. Schumake, do you have any discussion?
No, sir.
Very good.
Mr. Vice Chair, one more thing for clarity. We are prepared to go an executive session for tonight.
Okay.
Just want to make sure that there'll only be two personnel matters and one legal matter.
Two personnel and one legal?
Yes, sir.
We'll do that at the end of the meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
That okay with everybody? Good. Thank you. All right. All those in favor of the agenda as amended, raise your hand. Let the record show that it is unanimous. All of those oppose? All right. Number five, resolutions. A resolution acknowledging the service of public safety telecommunications officers as first responders in the Kershaw County, South Carolina, and other matters related thereto. Placing on the agenda by Councilman Cato, would you like to present that, sir?
Yes, sir. I'd like to make a motion, we accept this resolution.
Motion is made by Mr. Cato.
I would second.
Second by Mr. Schumake. Is there a discussion? If you would, Mr. Cato, would you like to read it?
Yes, sir. I sure would. Resolution acknowledging the service of public safety telecommunications officers as first responders in Kershaw County, South Carolina, and other matters relating thereto. Whereas, public safety telecommunications officers are part of a critical infrastructure of the public safety system and are trained and certified as telecommunications officers pursuant to South Carolina Criminal Justice Academy standards and training. And whereas, public safety telecommunications officers are a critical role in emergency response as the first line of communication for persons needing law enforcement, fire, or medical response, and are very often the first public safety employees handling the emergency. And whereas, public safety telecommunications officers are a lifeline to law enforcement, fire, and medical responders in the field. And whereas, public safety telecommunications officers deal with stressful situations, the need to make split-second decisions which affect the safety and well-being of both the public and first responder in delivering emergency medical pre-arrival instructions daily. And whereas, public safety telecommunications officers handle emergencies and non-emergency calls with compassion, empathy, and professionalism. And whereas, information gathered and relayed by public safety telecommunications officers can mean the difference between life and death for callers and field responders. It provides an integral basis for an effective public safety response and often can prevent an incident from worsening prior to the arrival of field responders. And whereas, with the advent of new generation 9/11, 9/11, public safety telecommunications officers are now subject to graphic photos, audio, and live streaming from scenes and emergency situations. And whereas, public safety telecommunications officers often suffer the post-traumatic stress disorder, even though they are not on the scene, by answering multiple traumatic calls, handling radio instances, and communicating with people in states of distress, fear, and injury. And whereas, first responders means a public safety employee whose duties include responding rapidly to an emergency or incident to provide assistance. Now, therefore, be it resolved by Kershaw County Council in a meeting duly assembled that Kershaw County acknowledges that public safety telecommunications officers are designated as first responders in Kershaw County, South Carolina, and shall be recognized as such in county policy and procedural considerations regarding first responders adopted this 23rd day of July 2024.
Very good. Very good. Very good presentation. Is there any discussion on that? Would you like to say a few words?
Yes, I've got several things I would like to say. I really would. I had worked with this with the 9/11 director, Ms. Tricia Crawford, and I appreciate her help on this. And I can't thank these men and women enough. From my background, I had 27 years in law enforcement, and I can't tell you how many times it was a good sound to hear a dispatcher in the background when you was in a tight situation. You always knew, and I worked 15 of those years with Kershaw County. I never went on a call to where, if it took me a while to respond, somebody wasn't coming through and asking me, "Are you okay?" You know, "What's your status?" A lot of these men and women that's here right now, I work with, they're still working. They're not retired like I am. Some of them's new faces. And I just wanted to share some things, a personal story. To tell you how traumatic this can be for some of these dispatchers and some of the things they go through. You know, making the split-second decisions and the traumatic instances that they deal with. I mean, think about having to give instructions to a mother that has a choking child or a child that's unresponsive, or maybe a dying parent. Just think of some of the situations that they could possibly, we as public, or as the public, don't think about. My personal instance was I had a dispatcher when I was at the sheriff's office dispatch me to my own father's death. They didn't know at the time that it was my father. They had no way of knowing it. When I arrived, that's when I found out. That dispatcher came to me very upset and emotional a few days later and apologizing. And it wasn't her fault, not at all. But she really, really, really grieved her and caused a lot of pain and suffering on her part because she thought she had done something to me that shouldn't have happened. This is the kind of things these men and women go through. And they have every right to be treated as a first responder in this county and throughout this state. They deserve the police retirement, and they deserve the benefits of any other first responder. They're the first line that we have. And we rely on them, and I say "we" because I still feel like part of that family. But officers, EMS, fire, we rely on these people. The public rely on these people. And I just thank you all so much for the job and the service that you do. The overtime and the time that you put in, taking away from your families, the nights you work, the things you do for us. I thank you wholeheartedly.
Thank you so much. Thank you, audience. Any other member of council?
Yes, sir, Mr. Vice Chair.
I know you served in public safety for about five, six years.
A little longer than that, but if that's your memory, I'll accept it.
You could, maybe 10.
I just want to say, I think Mr. Cato hit it on the head. I know for a fact, this is before video cameras was a signed piece of equipment to any officer when I was out patrolling the highways. And as you guys know, the great highways are patrolled by the state troopers of South Carolina, and we ride no one unless you're going to jail. So, you're out there solo doing your thing. And the thing that I've always appreciated about 9/11 dispatchers is that they can tell by the quiver in your voice, the hair that stands up on your neck when you're in situations, where they can do those checks as Mr. Cato was talking about. "Are you okay?" Just want to hear your voice back on the radio. During my tenure, for a good little bit of it, we were dispatched actually out of Sumter County. But I stayed up here, and this dispatch up here, talking to these ladies because our systems wasn't intertwined at the time. And gentlemen, because I don't want to leave Barry out. And with that being said, that it is a, I think it takes a special person to do this job because you see so many things and hear so many things and have to respond to so many things that you physically cannot help with. And your calmness, your knowledge, your cool-head Luke demeanor helps folks get through, not only just the responders, but also the families that's on the other end, or the citizens that's on the other end, trying to get through whatever traumatic times that they're having. So, I say to you, thank you. Thank you from the bottom of my heart. Continue to serve and recruit because we need more good people like you men and women. And I couldn't think of a better group that's more deserving to have these honors upon them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Any other member of council?
Yes, sir. I'd like to say a few words.
You go right ahead.
Thank you. I appreciate you, Danny, bringing this resolution tonight. I think for someone who just grew up not police, not ever being involved in any kind of first responder, not having anyone in my family being involved, I think we take some things for granted. And this is a strong reminder of what we have taken for granted. And I've been inside your workspace, and it looks traumatic from just walking in, the amount of computer screens that you're keeping up with, the panicked people that call in. And I just want to echo the comments of my colleagues. Thank you, thank you, thank you for what you do for this community, for Kershaw County. And this resolution's much deserved, and we appreciate you all.
Thank you, Mr. Brazel.
I just, I can't add anything of substance that these gentlemen already have it other than to say thank you, guys.
That's coming from a federal prosecutor. You're okay. Well, I'd like to say a couple of things. You know, I've always thought that EMS, you know, the, well, let me just say this. When I first started, I was dispatched. It was nowhere near what it is now, what they do. But I can tell you whether it was a headache then. That was back almost, what, 1971, '72? And having been a police officer, deputy sheriff, jailer, fireman, I've done it all. You guys deserved to be underpours. I've always wondered why they wasn't. You know, because I was able to retire underpours with 25 years, 15 days, and four months and 15 days. But I thank you so much for all you do. It's a stressful job. And I think it's the heartbeat of the public safety system. I really do. And you guys that are in telecommunications, I know it's tough. I know it's tough. And I wonder sometimes how you do it. And EMS, we certainly couldn't do without them. So, thank you so much. And Mr. Cato, thank you very much for bringing this up. And I see that we can follow through with it some way, somehow, with our support. Having said that, all in favor, let the record show this unanimous. And I'd like to ask, would y'all stand up, please?
I'd like to ask them all to come down and get a picture with the resolution. So, if you're one of the dispatchers, anybody here affiliated with 9/11 dispatch and communications, please come up for a picture.
I'm not dressed appropriate, but I'm 9/11.
No, I'm still, thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much. Appreciate you. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Okay, y'all. We're squeezing. Yes, that's fantastic. Ready, one, two, three? One, two, three. Thank you, congratulations.
Thank you again so much. Mr. Cato, again, thank you very much, that was very well done, very well done. We're number six, public comments. Mr. Tucker, would you mind just going over the rules real quickly?
No, sir, not at all. Okay, right there before me. Public comments is an opportunity for members of the public to share information with council. It is not a time for debate with or questions or answers from council. It is a time for council to receive input. It is not a time for council response. In short, during public comment, council will listen to public comment, but not comment on public comment. Individuals requesting to speak must sign up with their name, topic, and phone number. Offensive and inappropriate comments will not be tolerated. If a group will like to speak to council, we request that a spokesperson be selected and that this person indicates the group he or she is representing on the sign-up sheet and his or her comments. Public comment period is limited to five minutes per, a maximum allowed per individual speaker. With thirty minutes shall be divided by the number of persons who sign up, and each person shall be allotted the resulting times. Thirty minutes divided by the number of people, we've got six, so that's actually five minutes apiece. Public comments to council as an agenda item shall continue uninterrupted to be livestreamed by audio, video, where available, until the public comments agenda item is finished and concluded. These rules may be altered or amended by council by a single vote, including but not limited to when the agenda items is reached.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker, very much. Mr. DeBose.
We have four people signed to speak at public comments. First speaker is Ursula Conway. The subject is the amount of housing in Village of Bowear, Lugolf.
Thank you, Ms. Conway. Welcome.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. This is my first time being at your meeting, and I'm just concerned, I see that there's some items already under ordinances, and that's what I'm concerned about, whether there are ordinances that can control the amount of people and houses that are being built in the Village of Bowear. It seems to me if all the land is going to be built upon, that that place will be overcrowded. I can't even imagine the amount of cars that will be parked there in the driveways and on the streets. I expressed my concern to the fire chief of, the chief of police, I mean, the chief of fire department, and he assured me that the streets were wide enough to bring emergency vehicles in and out on both sides of the streets. But it still is a concern to me because it just seems like there's just going to be too many houses, which will house too many people in such a small amount of area. So my question is, will the city, will the county, Kershaw County, do anything about that? Will they limit the amount of houses that's going to be, that continues to be built or will be built in the future? And if so, I would like to know when I would have an answer to that question. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am, for those wonderful words.
Ms. Vice Chair?
Yes, I, no, go ahead.
I was just making sure that her information is on the sheet, and, okay.
Yes. Temple, you make sure and get in contact with her.
Yes, sir.
Ask her questions. Thank you so much. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Lynn Kanto, history and development.
Welcome. Appreciate you being here.
My name is Lynn Kanto. I live at 1265 Sanders Creek Road in Kershaw County, and I'm here to talk about multiple things. I've been doing a lot of research lately, and I came across some work that was done in 1995 through 1996. It was a year-long research on 861 areas in Kershaw County. And one of the areas that was discussed was the airport, actually. I don't know if you realize this, but the airport was moved because airplanes were landing where horses were, believe it or not. And so Mr. Woodward decided he didn't like that, and he donated land for an airport in the 1920s. And I am going to share with you a document, and I've tabbed the page, that tells the history of that, it's on page 27. Now, the documents you have are related to another area I'm going to talk about in a minute. I'm going to give you the actual whole document, it's online, by the way, as well. But there were eight doctorates that came for a year to research in Kershaw County, both in the city limits and in the county historic areas. And this was from the Historic Preservation Commission with federal money. So what you need to know is, any land that's being developed in any area, it has been specified in this document, 120-page document, okay? As far as the airport overlay, the county has spent a great deal of money to determine what the airport overlay encompasses and the dimensions required, and at no point, after all that time and money has been put into that, should that be deviated from, in respect to Mr. Woodward, who donated the land for the airport. So I would highly recommend we continue with a concept of a moratorium on the property near the airport, for that sake. Now, I went back and looked as far as the equine industry and how it impacted the airport. And actually, about the time that horses started coming back to Camden for horse racing is when the airport started to flourish, believe it or not. So if you look at the timeline, in Kershaw County, the boundaries of Kershaw County and Camden were founded in 1798. The first documented horse race was in 1798. In 1802, the first races meet were held from 1802 to 1832. And in 1820, the first track was forced actually to move from Sarsfield to the second track. And then there was a third track, which is on Chestnut Street. And it was actually multiple tracks. There was a Cherokee track, which was in the city limits, and then the Renfield, which is in the county now, it's on your map, you'll see in front of you. So my point being is, it's very important to maintain an airport overlay, an equine overlay, to maintain the heritage of Kershaw County and Camden, South Carolina. Now, in 1816, the Camden Jockey Club was incorporated, which actually impacted the one in the United States. They're the ones that said, everybody needs to wear a jockey silk, the colors of your stable, so we know which horse it is going around the field. In 1869, the Hawthorne Track deed was the second track. And then the third track was built on the west of the Seaboard Station, which has now moved to Highway One. But that was on the corner of Gordon Street and Chestnut Street, and the horses used to get off the train and were handwalked by the grooms onto the Camden Training Center. That's a, I mean, I don't know about you guys, but this is huge history. Those barns were built in the 1936 timeframe. This is huge history for Kershaw County. In 1870, racing was discontinued because of the economy for a short period of time. And then 1920s, guess what? The airport, and racing was revived. And not only did we do steeplechase racing, we had a flat race incorporated, and in 1930, the Carolina Cup. In 1935, DuPont began buying land, which was the old skeet club field, the old Cherokee racetrack, and the area where you see Renfield. In 1936, Renfield was built, and it was the prestigious track that others tried to emulate. So please take time, I'm going to give you the whole book, it marks in blue, the equine-related, orange, airport, and the historical significance of both. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, and I thank you very much for that history lesson. This is some good stuff, and I look forward to reading it. Don't hesitate, Danny, would you help her, please? Don't hesitate to contact any of us at any point in time as well, too. Thank you so much.
Next speaker is Kathy Sherrill, development.
Last name, please.
Sherrill.
Welcome.
I've written my speech, so it's good evening, council members, thank you for letting me speak. My name is Kathy Sherrill, and I have been a resident of East Camden for over 40 years. This is concerning the subdivision that's posed on Poulsen Road and by the builders of D.R. Horton. I have, I would like to express my concerns with the history of D.R. Horton homes. And if you'll see in that paperwork that I gave you, please see the printout provided detailing construction issues from D.R. Horton homeowners. In 11 states, there's been complaints of lawsuits from D.R. Horton, that's 11 states. Do we want to be the 12th state? WISTV reported on this numerous times, that it started on May 9th and May 10th. Are we going to be the 12th state? We, the people, voted for you to represent Kershaw County. Thank you for letting me reflect on this to you, and are you going to take care of our homeowners? That's it.
Thank you so much, thank you. We don't have any comments in this section, but as the chair, I'm going to say this, this county council has done a great job on working on housing issues, and I think they're going to hit it a little bit more harder as time goes by and we get more information. But thank you so much for those words. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Tom Webb, the subject is litter.
Mr. Webb, welcome.
Well, I too am worried about the big developments, but from the point of view of if the supply chain breaks, how you going to feed them? We would have already have been on starvation rations, and these people will come and they will knock on your door and say, "Can you feed me? I can't do it, I can't do it. We need a lot more corn, a lot more in storage for that eventuality." Anyway, that's not what I was going to speak about, I'm going to talk about litter. And I tell you that the people own the roads, they pay the taxes that build the roads, the people own the roads, the people are the boondocks out in the unincorporated areas of Kershaw County, they own the roads, and you have passed a litter ordinance that mistreats them dreadfully, even though you're not enforcing it yet, nobody even knows the litter ordinance exists. But I know you don't intend to do things with it that are so egregious, but a litter ordinance allows it, it's in plain, plain words. So several things have been outlawed for the people in the unincorporated area, and including paper on private property. And my automobile is my private property. I can't have paper in my automobile. It's outlawed. If I was stopped for something, taillight out or something, and an officer saw it, well, he could charge me $250 for having paper in my vehicle. Of course, that's absurd, it's absurd. But still, it's in the litter ordinance, it's in there. So the Eighth Amendment says, the Constitution, Bill of Rights says, no excessive fines. Your litter ordinance is illegal and unconstitutional then, because it can fine a person $250 for something like a paper cup or a plastic bag that, inordinate, that flies out of your truck or out of your vehicle, unintended, completely unintended, $250 fine for that. If it were done, $250 fine, this really aggravates people, the people will not love their government anymore if you continue to do this sort of thing. You're doing this little by little, you're whittling away at American freedom. So I would suggest that you go back to McMaster's litter law. Graduated fines starts out low, gets bigger and bigger as the amount of trash is bigger and bigger. It goes up to $1,000 for a pickup load that's dumped out on some back road. So Klaus Schwab of the World Economic Forum says, "No private property by 2030." I don't see how he can do it, but there's a lot of things I don't see how it can be done. World Economic Forum is kings and queens, politicians, people in big business, lots of money in it, they can do things. And so Klaus Schwab says, "No, no private property by 2030." So what you're doing with your litter ordinance is helping him, you're helping to convert private property into public property, little by little, whittling away at American freedom. So I'm going to hand in my newspaper today, just trying to make a point, handing in my newspaper, because I could be fined $250 for it, according to your litter ordinance. If I were stopped and that was found on my possession, on my private property, I could be fined $250 for my newspaper. That's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Webb, for those wonderful words. Next speaker.
It's all of it signed to speak to public comments.
That was it? Okay, that's into public comments. Thank you all for coming up here, really appreciate this information, too, look forward to looking through it. All right, public hearing, number seven, an ordinance to amend the Kershaw County, South Carolina Unified Code of Zoning and Land Development Regulation, Section 335, camps and recreational vehicle parks, to modify the dimensional requirements for the maximum impervious surface ratios to allow for a, excuse me, to allow for an impervious surface ratio of 35% of the project site. Is there a motion to open this?
Public hearing.
Excuse me?
Open up the hearing.
Yeah, is it, I'm sorry, we don't need a motion for that. Did anybody sign up for the public hearing?
Not for this matter.
I'd like to ask, does anybody wish to come up and speak on this? Okay, there's no one, the public hearing was open, public hearing is closed. All right. We long to be an ordinance to impose a moratorium to temporarily prohibit the acceptance of processing of applications for zoning map amendments and new development submissions within the geographic boundaries of the airport overlay district, Section 371 of the Kershaw County Unified Code of Zoning and Land Use Development Regulation, ZLDR, to end the application of the moratorium on January 9, 2025, and to provide for other matters related thereof. Is there a motion to open that?
It's open.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's public.
Mr. DeBose.
One speaker, Ms. Jessica Coulter.
Ms. Coulter, come on up, please.
Good evening, council members.
Good evening.
Thank you for your time tonight, and thank you for this opportunity for a public hearing. As mentioned during the public comment, I am speaking on behalf of several citizens who are here in the audience tonight that are concerned about this moratorium. The airport overlay is a complex issue, with some competing priorities, perhaps. In review of the FAA guidelines, the compatible land use and airports, which, by the way, is 141-page document, and this is just one of all the regulations. Included within that FAA guidelines, it includes but not limited to runway production zones, compatible land use and airports, how might we consider the airport impact zones, what are the restrictions, how many of them are there? If there is vacant land, it must, we must exercise If there is vacant land, it must, we must exercise sufficient control through zoning. Those are some of the highlights. Also, it is FAA policy to object to incompatible land uses, such as homes. Homes, I'm not sure if my mic's working there. Okay, thank you, Mr. Tucker. Schools, I might have had to say that one twice anyway. Schools, normally those are considered incompatible, according to the F.A.R. Part one fifty. I'm a social worker. I am not a zoning expert, right? And, but the airport and the community, community planning process are intertwined. So as we approach the comprehensive plan and the Z.L.D.R., and I said we, because we're part of it, we must seek common goals in those two things. People who work at the county are knowledgeable about these issues, and they should have the time to consider all the facts and all the requirements. Many of these county staff are much smarter than me, as I mentioned, I'm a social worker, on zoning and regulations. And I know myself and many of my neighbors who are in this audience would be willing to be part of a committee, a task force, or just a group to learn about those FAA requirements and their impacts on our county in supporting the rights, the right decision moving forwards. We appreciate the thoughtful process that this body and the county staff are going through to ensure we follow all the requirements, not just that hundred and forty-one page document, but all the FAA guidelines. And we uphold the rights of all the citizens of Kershaw County. Might we imagine our county airport as a source of revenue, employment for our county and the citizens of our community? We are in agreement for the moratorium to at least January, as I said. Many, many documents will go into the decisions that your county staff and you all will have to consider, and hopefully the citizens of the county. To temper, we, we are in agreement for that moratorium to temporarily prohibit any future applications for development within that airport overlay. So thank you for your time and your consideration, and I look forward to hearing from some of you as you all create whatever the group might be. I will get you in touch with the neighbors that are in this audience today. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any comments, anybody?
Do we have Ms. Coulter's info? I know we do with public comments, but do we have Ms. Coulter's info?
Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming here. Very well said, very well said. Okay, moving into approval of the minutes. Kershaw County Council Tuesday, July nine, twenty twenty-four, regular meeting. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve the minutes that was submitted by, um, our clerk to council, which is actually our assistant administrator. We appreciate the job well done, um, last meeting.
Very good, Mr. Tucker.
And thank you too, Ms. Hannah, for all you do.
Motion by Mr. Tucker, is there a second?
I'll second.
Let's think about Mr. Cato, discussion. No discussion, all in favor of the minutes as stated. Raise your hand. Let it be direct to show this unanimous. All, anybody opposed? No. All right, moving on to number nine ordinance, is the third reading, case twenty-four nineteen, an ordinance to amend the Kershaw County, South Carolina Unified Code of Zoning and Land Development Regulations, three, three, five, to allow for the impervious surfaces ratio of thirty-five percent of the project site. Is there a motion to put this on the floor?
I would make a motion to put this on the floor, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Schumake. A second.
Second.
By Mr. Tucker, thank you. Discussion, Mr. Schumake.
This is third reading. We've talked about this a couple of times, Mr. Chair, but basically what this would allow, the, the ten thousand foot view, is it would give a slight expansion, um, for the impervious soil ratio for our RV and campground parks. At present, this would only impact one park, uh, Mr. Renfro's campground, because his campground is a little bit unique in the soil type. The other campgrounds don't have to worry about the impervious soil ratio. Uh, Mr. Renfro does. This basically allows him to have a slightly higher percentage, which would allow him to expand just a little bit, not a lot. It's still, it's still required. It's only a five percent difference, and that forty percent impervious soil ratio, as, as we noted in our last meeting, is in keeping with what other counties are doing. So we're not outside of the pale. In fact, we're still under several of our neighboring counties. And the whole point of impervious soil ratio requirements is so you don't pave over everything. You pave over everything, you get a bunch of runoff, really bad for the environment. No one's suggesting you should be able to pave over fifty acres. This is just a very slight adjustment so that Mr. Renfro can grow and actually have a successful business, and businesses that come into the future. This isn't just about one business. He's just the example. But this evens the playing field so that new parks coming in are on the same footing as the parks that exist.
Mr. Schumake, oh, thank you for all the work you put into this. That's very well put, and I certainly like it. Uh, anybody else? Any comments? Job well done, Mr. Schumake. Okay, so all in favor, third reading. Let the record show that it is unanimous. Again, thank you, Mr. Schumake. All right. Third reading, case twenty-four twenty-one, an ordinance amending the Kershaw County Zoning Land and Development Regulation, Z.L.D.R., to provide that single-family residential attached uses, townhomes, patio homes, and multifamily apartment uses shall not comprise more than ten percent of the net develop acreage of a major subdivision. Is there a motion to put this on the floor?
I'll make a motion and put it on the floor.
All right. Thank you, thank you.
I would second.
Mr. Brazel, second by Mr. Schumake, thank you. Okay, Mr. Brazel.
Uh, I think this is just shoring up what we, uh, did months ago in, uh, in the efforts to tame development just a bit, to cap ten percent of the net developable acres at ten percent of the total. So if you're developing two hundred and fifty acres, you can develop ten percent of it into, uh, multifamily and apartments and that sort of thing. So this just shores up the, uh, the legal side of it.
I know you, you worked very hard on that, and a good job. I think this is really good.
Thank you.
Good stuff here tonight. Anybody else? Any other comments? Ms. Brazel, were you through?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else, any other comments? It's third reading, all in favor. The record show that it is unanimous. All right, second reading. In order to impose a moratorium to temporarily prohibit the acceptance and processing of applications for zoning map amendments and new development submissions, uh, within the geographical boundaries of the airport overlay district, Section three, seven, one of the Kershaw County Unified Code of Zoning and Land Use Development Regulations, to end the application of the moratorium on January nine, twenty twenty-five, and to provide for other matters related there, too. Is there a motion to put this on the floor for second reading?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve second reading.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Thompson. Is, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, by Mr. Schumake, Ms. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. As a county, we've been working very, very hard to look at the future of Kershaw County. This is a temporary, uh, moratorium, so six months, we have the ability to shorten it or potentially extend it on the airport overlay. Right now, we're in the process of having a comp plan redone and a Z.L.D.R. rewrite. We have the ability as a county, as communities, to come together and figure out what the future for the next ten years, after we get these rewrites done, in about a year and a half to two years. Um, right now, our airport is a very historic piece, an important piece to Kershaw County. And as I said, this is, this is temporary. We're taking this approach because right now we are in the middle of a rewrite of our comp plan and our, our Z.L.D.R. So once we get this done, you know, the decisions that are made will be going forward. But right now, I would like, uh, council to stick with the people and protect our airport.
Any other comments? Mr. Tucker.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Mr. Thompson, I couldn't agree more, but I just wanted to add this for the record as we go through this process. And I cannot remember the young lady's last name, but I do remember your first name, it's Ms. Jessica. It's not often that we get people in public comment or in, um, public hearings that's requesting more information and want to partner and come up and speak to you without being ugly and mean and just unconversational, that's the word I'm going to use, if it's such a word it is tonight, uh, it's in my vocabulary. With that being said, um, I would like, as we go through this process over the next six, nine months, that we come up with some mechanism, uh, Mr. Administrator, where we could, can include some input from the public and educate the ones that want to be educated on our process to, uh, make sure that we make best decisions for our airport.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Anybody else?
Got a question that's related, but, but not necessarily directly related. Does this prohibit the, the building of any homes or commercial buildings within the district as well?
Yeah, for the area identified as zones, um, A, B, and C on the attached map to the exhibit, yeah, prohibits any rezoning and any building permit or application for building permit.
So if a church, if a church was to, to, to be about to build a gymnasium, they, they wouldn't be able to do that?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Let, let me just say this, uh, the reason that, Mr., probably, uh, I'm sure you can answer this question, Mr. Thompson. The reason that it's, uh, a temporary situation right now is because we're going through our,
Our rewrite, yes.
Yeah, we're rewriting our, our zoning laws and comprehensive plan and things like that, correct?
Z.L.D.R. Absolutely.
So that's, that's why this is temporary. I think this is a good thing. I like it. I appreciate you putting it on the agenda. I appreciate you bringing it forth to this council. I think it's some good stuff here, and I look forward to, uh, once we finish the rewrites, to come back and revisit it for our permanent situation. I'd like to look at, does it need to even be extended to some degree? I don't know. We'll, we'll figure that out as time goes by. All right. All in favor, as written, raise your hand. Let the record show that Mr. Tucker, Mr. Schumake, Mr. Cato, Mr. Thompson, Jimmy Jones in favor, all oppose. The record show Mr. Brazel opposes. Thank you, gentlemen, passes. All right, new business was taken off. Council member briefings, Mr. Brazel.
Oh, we already made it to that. This was short, wasn't it? It's quick. Like to talk some about the reason why I didn't, um, vote for the, uh, the moratorium. I won't get into specific details, but I know for a fact that, that there's a church that wants to expand there. They have a growing congregation, and, um, I've had conversations with the pastor lately, and, um, he had no idea. They, they've been to work on their church now for, for months and months and months designing it. And, um, it really called him off guard hearing this news. So when we do something this broad, we don't get to pick and choose what we like and what we don't like. I may not, I may, I may be in a hundred percent agreement with some of the issues that, that you brought before us. But when we impact the entire community and, and what people are doing on their private property, it just doesn't impact that one specific property. I too want to make sure that the airport stays viable, of course. But there's a lot to consider when we, when we put a moratorium in place. So not to dwell on that, like to speak also to, uh, to this year being, Kershaw County's fire service is celebrating its fiftieth anniversary. Leading the way, the Pine Grove Fire Station was established first in July of nineteen seventy-four, out in my neck of the woods, a half a century ago this month. A small community in Kershaw County led the way. I just wanted to congratulate those families, uh, the, the members of the fire department who are still serving there today, um, in Pine Grove, that, that led the way for the fire service here in Kershaw County. There, there's a lot of people that work for free or very little pay to take care of our communities, and, and that goes for, for everyone. But it just so happened that July of nineteen seventy-four was, was when Pine Grove was first established. And in October, there'll, there'll be a lot more talked about, um, on council, about how the, the fire service was established here in Kershaw County, and, um, we'll have those gentlemen up and ladies and gentlemen here to, uh, to help celebrate fifty years. So that concludes my briefings. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brazel. Mr. Tucker.
Uh, thank you. Very briefly, um, I just want to, um, kind of piggyback on what Mr. Brazel said about the moratorium. I am not a big fan of telling people what they can and cannot do when it comes down to their private property. But at the same time, I know how important it is and how many, uh, dollars and future of the airport, um, that we will lose, and then we will also not be able to attract growth later on. So, um, I'm supporting this because it's a temporary one, and I'm wholeheartedly not giving lip service when it comes down to the group being involved, um, because, um, I am sincere about my conversation with this group. Let's make sure that we are able to have a broad mind, open mind, and let's figure out what's best. And I know we've got a serious growth problem in Kershaw County. I don't have the magical answers, but, um, we can chip at it a little bit at a time. Ms. Conway is concerned in her area as well, um, and someone's going to get in touch with you, Ms. Conway, and try to at least, I can't tell you they're going to stop anything or do anything, but what they can do is enlighten you and give you information so you better understand the process that we're in. And, and so, um, I'm committed to that as well, and we've got a great administrator and staff that will take care of that. Yes, ma'am. So with that, I want to say, um, congratulations to Pine Grove for fifty years. They're, they're as young as I am. And, um, I want to, uh, thank all of you. I look forward to next week. We're headed out to our annual conference, and, um, I'm excited about going, um, because I have not shared this news yet, but I have been, um, elected, nominated, or either, um, just chosen, uh, to be on the board of directors for the Association of Counties for the state. So, um, I'm going to represent Kershaw County and, um, see can we get more, bigger, better things that we deserve, our citizens, uh, to this county. So very excited. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Mr. Schumake.
Yeah, congratulations, by the way.
Thank you.
On the Association of Counties' point, that's, that's big. Um, you know, um, you, Mr. Webb talked a little bit about litter. I, I would like to point out that obviously I fundamentally disagree with Mr. Webb about how he reads that litter ordinance, but he and I have had that discussion multiple times, uh, and we actually have started to see the first of the enforcement mechanisms on that litter ordinance. If you go around this county, you see some pretty disgusting stuff. There's this little Facebook reel or TikTok or whatever that the kids watch, and there's this guy that's like, ew, brother, ew. Like, and if you watch some of what we see around the counties, it's, ugh. And to that point, if you want to help with that, Saturday, August third, this has actually started, this was started by Councilman Brazel and some folks that he works with, and this is the Watery Trash Festival. It is, you know, we do a lot of street cleanups with the Clean Communities Commission. This one is a chance to go down by the water, and, I mean, gosh, I think they're measuring in tons, aren't they, Russell?
Yeah, and we picked up like nine tons in, in three years.
Yeah. So, I mean, it's, it's, and these guys come out on boats, so please, it's on, they have a great Facebook page. They're really interactive, Watery Trash Festival. Look it up on Facebook for all the details. Starts about seven, eight in the morning for registration. If you don't have a boat, that's fine. You can ride on some bides, you can walk along the shore, um, or come and support. But it's a really, really big cleanup. Clean Community Commission helps out. Again, I don't, who are the names of the people so we can give them proper recognition that are up and running?
Mason Wolf heads it up now. And that's Jill's son from the Clean Community Commission, so, um, Carson Morgan and Alan Wooton, Jr.
So I would encourage any, I'll, I'll be there. I would encourage you all to come out. It's, it's a really amazing effort. You know, I also want to mention that several folks talked about growth, Ms. Conway, of course, Ms. Canto on preservation, Ms. Sherrill, and Ms. Coulter. You know, uh, specifically to, uh, to you, Ms. Conway, you'd ask about some of the efforts. Recently, we've expanded minimum lot sizes in the county. They're required to be a half acre. That's if there's sewer and water. And what that has the net, net impact of is it decreases the maximum density. So to your point, it, it limits the amount of people that can be in any single acre. It's a step in the right direction. The amendment that, uh, Mr. Brazel made months ago that we just sort of put some fine tunes on, helps with that because if you have a major development, one sort of in run around that density issue is just to do apartments or townhomes and things. So what Mr. Brazel's amendment does is if you have a large development, that larger density use can only be ten percent or less of the overall development. So those are some things we've done in the last couple of months. We're looking at impact fees. I, I, again, that's something that the administrator is going to bring in front of us. You see these moratoriums. Not all these issues have unanimous support, and that's kind of how it should be, right? I mean, there should be a robust discussion. There are real property rights and real interests at play here. So I wouldn't anticipate these things to last forever, but we're in the middle, as Mr. Tomlinson said, of a big rewrite. And what we really need to be doing now that we've done some of these measures is we really need to focus on what does this is we really need to focus on what does this zoning land use regulation document look like? What can we do to preserve these things into the future? What we've done now is put some Band-Aids on some pretty big issues. But now it's time to really go in and find those issues out with the help of you folks in the community. A lot of you, I know I've seen at some of these workshops that we've done, they're publicized. If you go to my Facebook page, I put them up there. Unfortunately, we don't have like a TV station in Kershaw County that really follows Kershaw County stuff. So unfortunately, you got to kind of dig to find the news. We put it out there, but unless you're reading the Chronicle or checking out our Facebook pages, sometimes it's hard to get that. But just keep checking those things out because it's really, really important. So thank you, thank you all for those comments. And lastly, thank you to Ms. Hannah, who had her little grandbaby. So congratulations. And that's all I have.
Mr. Vice Chair, can I ask you to yield for one second? It takes me less than a minute, I believe.
Absolutely.
And I think this is very appropriate coming from me. So yesterday was the beginning of early voting. You need to go vote. I'm not telling you who to vote for, but you need to go vote. You can vote from 8:30 to 5:00 p.m., the 22nd of this week through the 26th. So that's Monday through Friday. And then the 29th through August 2nd, which is Monday through Friday next week. And then the actual day of election is going to be August the 6th. So if you want to choose to sit on your laurens and stay at home, then please stay there and don't come up in public comment and tell us how much you don't like us. Go vote. Thank you.
Very well said, Mr. Tucker. Thank you. Mr. Kato?
Short and sweet tonight. I want to thank everybody with the public comments tonight. Ms. Conway, thank you for your comments. I want to thank Ms. Coulter and Ms. Kanto for your presentations. I am a lot like my colleague, Mr. Tucker. I'm voting for this because, right now, because it's a temporary thing. And it gives us a chance to really get ourselves in order because we've got to do something with the growth here in this county. And I'm not going to beat a dead horse by going into all of that. But the airport is a very important part of this county. It's a very important part of this county. Lastly, I want to, again, thank 911 Dispatch and all the men and women that served there. And it came out tonight. I thank them for that. And I thank all my colleagues for supporting that resolution. I really appreciate it. Other than that, y'all have a safe night.
Thank you, Mr. Kato.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. It's exciting to see Kershaw County and the community and citizens coming together for a positive purpose for Kershaw County. It really is, you know, that for years and years, people didn't have the ability to come up and give input. And we have groups all across this county, from Cassid, Bethune, all the way to Elgin, Camden, coming together to try to look to see how we can... Because it's not just the decisions that we sit up here and make. It's the whole community coming together that is going to reshape Kershaw County for 25 years. I am not anti-growth at all. I think, you know, we can't even prevent growth, but we have to responsibly manage growth because having the history of Kershaw County changed in just the blink of an eye, that is on our shoulders sitting up here. So anything that we can do to be smart, to see how our future generations in Kershaw County is going to be, I am all for. And once we get this, and we need your input for the rewrite, the comp plan and ZLDR. We need the citizens' input so we can make those decisions and make sure we have the right regulations in place that will be in place for the next 10 years until the next rewrite. It's not just us up here. So everybody's voice is very, very important. I would also like to thank the T-shirts across Kershaw County. School starts back August the 1st. I have two little ones that'll be in the elementary school, second grade and third grade. So I know that the teachers have a busy week here trying to get things prepared, but really appreciate all they do.
By the way, if my teacher wife is listening, Brant's comment is from both of us.
There you go. You suck up.
You got that in good, Darren.
That's funny. But thank you to staff for all your hard work, and I am done. Have a good night, guys.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Very well said. Just a couple of things right quickly. I really enjoy when I see a council that's not unanimous. I may not agree with your decision, but bottom line is, I think that's healthy. I think it's healthy that we have difference of opinions up here. So, but I also thought Mr. Brazel brought a good point up. And we need to think about that and look at it. But I'm going to tell you something now. I support the overlay for the airport. No question about that. And Sam, I appreciate you bringing up that people going to vote. I think it's vital, especially when you have a special election that's a small turnout. It's very vital people get in and vote. But you know, I look at this county council, and I think back of the 18 years that I've been here, we don't agree with each other. I didn't agree with the budget. However, Mr. Brazel didn't agree on the overlay tonight. However, we get along. We work together. And I have really appreciated that because I have not been able to work with the county council for 18 years. So finally, there's one here that we do work together, and I appreciate it. I don't know if it's all because of the young minds sitting up here or what, but minus you, Mr. Tucker.
Speak for yourself, Mr. Jones. Speak for yourself.
But let me just say this too. On the committees and the task force, the chair does have the ability to create an ad hoc committee. I am very interested, and I'll talk to my colleagues as well too, between now and the next meeting, as to the possibilities that... Because I think it's vital to have input from the citizens. And Mr. Tucker and I fought on, we fought about that 20 years ago when I first came on county council. They were going to do with the Airport Commission and the Recreation Commission. But we fought, and we got them both reinstated, but it took a couple of years.
And Clean Community...
And the Clean Community Commission was dissolved. We actually brought that back as well. I don't mean to say me myself, but bottom line, it was Mr. Tucker and myself. And I appreciate all those times that we fought to get those things back. And look where we are now and look at the council this year now. So thank you, gentlemen. I've enjoyed working with you as your acting chair, and we'll see where it goes from here. But regardless, we need to look at and talk about that hot committee or a committee or some type of task force to have the folks' input in that. Having said that, administrative briefing. Mr. Templar?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Members of council, just several items. First, just want to thank IT for jumping on the computer outage we had last week. It was kind of global, if you will. But it really impacted us. We're a small organization, but we have a really dedicated crew of IT people, starting with Chris here. They came in at 1:30 in the morning and worked till 12:30 in the afternoon the next day, prioritizing the computers that needed to be up, starting with central dispatch. So sheriff's office, our first responders, and of course, working their way out for into the public interfacing sides. So really appreciate their hard work on that. That was a very solid effort. And to come in at 1:30 and not leave until it was resolved is just a top shelf effort.
Thank you.
Public Works has been working tirelessly to address a slew of washouts on our dirt roads. We have clogged pipes. As Mr. Tucker, you mentioned, we're getting a bunch of rain that has consequences for us. And it comes in the form of washouts on our dirt roads and just other drainage issues. So I think we're working through maybe, I probably started with a list of maybe 20-plus roads with various issues, but we're working through that. So we're trying to prioritize, and we have some roads that are washed out a little worse than others. So again, trying to jump on that to get people some safe access down the road. So just have a little patience with us if that comes up.
May I ask a question on it, Mr. Templar? Do you have any equipment that is down?
Not to my knowledge. We're just a little short on some of our employees, but they're working pretty good.
And you have a plan to try to get that resolved as well?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
That's that budget you didn't vote for. He's trying to implement.
No, it has nothing to do with... Mr. Tucker, it has nothing to do with that because I presented an alternative plan that would fund everything that you wanted without raising taxes. Don't start that. That's the propaganda. All right, now you're going to make the old Jimmy Jones come out of me, okay? All right.
Sorry, Mr. Administrator.
Mr. Templar?
Sammy's bored with that slow meeting.
Go ahead, Mr. Templar.
Thank you. Just moving on real quick. Talking about the river cleanup event, we're going to have a... We'll have someone out there with the rendering and the concept of what our new boat ramp is going to look like out there. So if you make it out there, be sure to stop by the tent that will be set up out there if you have any questions or anything on what we're going to be working on out there to install what I say is a pretty top-notch boat ramp and facility at the Veterans Park. So just a little update on that. We should be, as far as, the due diligence has been done. We're going to send out the bid around August 5th. We have to keep it out for a period of time, so we hope to receive bids by September 10th. I look for the bid to come before council on the 24th. And then we should have four months to construct, but then one of the pinch points will be the fall/winter time as it relates to setting concrete. So we'll look to push on and do whatever we can, but it could be as late as February or early March when we get some warmer weather. So we'll continue to push that project throughout the winter. So some of the other recreation projects, the Boyd Young and Copeland Parks in the northern part of the county, plans should be completed by, well, they were completed July 26th. And then we should get permitting and everything done by August 26th. And then we hope to have that bid sent out by August 28th, with potentially coming before council for the October 8th meeting for that bid. Moving on with Woodward Park, there's been a lot happening out there. Again, the site work has been done. The CTC was kind enough to help us with our turn lane that kind of came up, and that alleviated a lot of costs there. So 95% of the civil and architectural plans should be ready by the end of September. Land disturbance permits by mid-October. And then we look for bid documents early November, by early November, first week of December. And then, so this will be what is anticipated to be a nine-to-12-month construction period. But there's a lot going on in there with the schedule of lighting, playground, equipment delivery, and just different approval processes. So that's kind of where we stand on those. And then West Waterway Parking Lot, we look for a proposal to come to us from Alliance this Friday. So some of these will work much quicker than others. West Waterway Parking Project, I anticipate that to not take that long. I don't want to kind of get that tied up with some of the larger projects. So that is all I have. If y'all have any questions or would like a copy of any of these timelines, please let me know.
Mr. Templar, thank you so much. Let me just, I appreciate that on other recreational issues. I would like for you to go ahead and start and get ready to propose a plan to us on what we're going to do about our jail.
Yes, sir.
Give me a reasonable time that you think you'd need to bring something to us.
Well, I have numbers now, and they are very, for lack of better terms, very ugly numbers.
We got to look at it. We have to look at it.
Very daunting.
So what we're doing now is looking at a scaled, a potentially scaled-back approach as well as looking at partnering with Sumter Lee to decrease some of the pressure on our jail population.
We had a tri-county partnership when I was, when I first became jail administrator.
And what we're finding now is a daily per diem rate is $70 per inmate. So we're running numbers on that and what it's going to look like. So yeah, it's going to be a...
It's gone up tremendously high.
Yes, sir.
$70.
$70. And then just based on early numbers, just kind of back-of-the-napkin numbers, you're looking at maybe $1.2 million in reoccurring annual cost if we were to partner with... And that's just first blush.
Well, we've got to do something. And the bottom line is, we keep talking about all these other little projects, but we've got to look at the jail. So if you would, I know you've been working on it, and I thank you for that, but I want you to go ahead and put your nose in the book and...
Sure, yes.
Give us a couple of options. Is that okay, guys? Any comments on that? Anything else, Mr. Templar?
I never heard that.
I have a question for you.
Go ahead, Mr. Tucker.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. On your turn lane for the park, what was that amount that the CTC partnered with us on?
For some reason, with all the traffic study and everything, I wanted to say it was between $200,000 and $400,000.
I think around $3,000. Yes, and the only reason I'm asking that is because I want this council to know and the public. When these folks come calling back to us to work with them on a project because they're needing some help, we should not blink our eye to them because that could be out of the monies that we have to put in the park that we're paying out of that to do highway work. And that was not, you know, there to do that. We are already, you know, struggling for cash to try to do a decent recreation center there.
Right.
So, you know, you can save $300,000, $400,000. That's a big plus.
Yes. And again, we're extremely thankful for the work they have done and their consideration and, you know, everybody that went before them to kind of pitch that idea. And so that was a huge kind of tailwind for that project.
You're talking about transportation?
Yes, sir.
Committee? Yeah, they've been very good partners.
Right.
No question about it. They've helped with our calcium chloride as well too, when we ran short on that.
Absolutely.
It's very expensive. Very good. Mr. Tucker?
No, that's...
Any other members, any questions about Mr. Templar? Thank you, Mr. Templar. Do we have a legal report?
No legal report for open session.
Sir?
No report for this open session.
All right.
Mr. Vice Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we go on executive session for two personnel matters, one legal matter, with no intentions of any action coming out.
Very good.
I would like to include the county administrator...
My question.
And the county attorney, please.
Very good. Is there a second?
I'm second.
Who yields? Okay. Mr. Kato, seconds. Any discussion? Okay, let the record show that Mr. Tucker has asked for an executive session with two personnel issues and one legal issue, correct?
Correct, sir.
With no action to be taken?
Correct, sir.
Very good. All right, all those in favor, raise your hand to go to executive session. Let the record show that it's unanimous. We're in the second session. Let's keep it... Let's keep it-
How did you do that?
Is there a motion to come out Executive Session?
Yes, sir. Make a motion. We come out Executive Session, sir.
Mr. Tucker is the second.
Second.
Mr. Chu make any discussion?
Just want to let the public know, Mr. Jones, that there was a discussion on the personnel matter, legal matter, and there was no votes taken, and there is no votes needed.
Very good. All in favor? The director show this unanimous. Have a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion. We adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.